Okay. My name is Tommy Carden and I am Chair of the Mississippi Charter School Authorizer Board. And I want to welcome each of you here tonight at this historic occasion. Last night we were in Columbus. I told them that they truly were the historic occasion because they were the very first ever public hearing on a proposed public charter school in the state of Mississippi. And so, tonight, we are the second public hearing on a proposed charter school in Mississippi. And so, we have our place in history as well. And so, thank each of you for being here tonight. I also want to introduce some others in the audience, particularly our members, my fellow members of the Charter School Authorizer Board. We have sitting near the back, Mr. Chris Wilson, who is Vice Chair. Chris, good to see you. And on the front row, we have Ms. Karen Eelon, Dr. Karen Eelon. Dr. Eelon is here from Oxford. And then, Mr. Johnny Franklin, sitting next to her, who is here in the local area. All of these are members of the Charter Authorizer Board, and they have done an outstanding job. It has been quite a privilege and pleasure to work with people of this caliber throughout this process. They have impressed me tremendously with their dedication, their work ethic, and their commitment to this process. And so, Chris, Johnny, Karen, thank you for being here, and thank you for all the hard work that you've put into this. We are the Mississippi Charter School Authorizer Board. We are a state agency. We were established as part of the Charter Authorizer Act, which authorizes the existence of public charter schools in Mississippi. And our job is to consider applications for proposed charter schools and either approve those or deny those, and consider those applications on an annual basis. We had a first meeting September the 19th, and I don't think any of us really knew what we were getting into until we arrived at that meeting. But we quickly discovered that we had a December 1st deadline to publish an RFP statewide and to see if we could generate some interest in public charter schools. And I commend my fellow board members again for stepping up to the plate and really coming through and not only drafting the RFP and all the accompanying documents that go with it, but doing it early, ahead of the deadline. And we headed out on the street. We've had a very, very encouraging response for this, our first round of applications. We had over 30 letters with intent submitted indicating an interest in filing applications. We had 12 actual applications that were submitted. Of those 12 applications, three have made it through all three phases of the evaluation and review process and are now at the near the end of the stage, consideration for decision. We will meet on June 2nd, and we will make a final decision with regard to the proposed application that we are here about tonight, as well as the other two pending applications. The other two applications are for proposed charter schools in Columbus, Mississippi, and in Natchez. We had a public hearing in Columbus last night, and we have a public hearing in Natchez tomorrow. And so, we are, and important part of this process for us in terms of our job has been transparency. And we've really worked hard to make sure that this is as transparent a process as possible and that we have included and considered public input and comment along the way. I will tell you, we received a lot of helpful comments from members of the public, and we appreciate that. It's really helped us in the work that we're doing. And that's part of the reason we are here tonight. The purpose that we are here for tonight really is two-fold. The first is, we're going to hear from the applicant. The applicant is Republic Charter School Board, the Republic Charter School Board one of the directors of the actual applicant. The Proposed Charter School is for the Reimagine Prep, is the name of the school. And so, we're here to, we're here to learn from them, to hear from them about the proposed charter school. And then, secondly, we're here to hear from you, those of you who are members of the public, who will be affected by the existence of this proposed school if it's approved. We want to know what you think about this application, about this proposed charter school. Let me emphasize at this point what this hearing is not about. We're not here tonight to debate the propriety of merits of charter schools, whether charter schools should exist or not. That decision has been made by the legislature. We are here tonight in our role to implement that which the legislature has put into place. And so, we're interested in the application. We're interested in the applicant. And the applicant has already been through quite a rigorous process. I think that the applicant will testify to that if we help him to it tonight. It's been a rigorous, comprehensive process, and it's designed to be that way. It's not intended to be easy. And so, we want to hear comments directed towards this proposed charter school and the application itself. This is also not a question and answer session. If you have questions that you have about the applicant or off the applicant, there's an appropriate time for those to be made after this hearing, anytime you wish to do so. But tonight is not a night for question and answer. Tonight is a night to receive public comment and to hear from you. Let me say to you also, we've got two sign-up sheets that we have at the desk over here. You see Catherine Stewart, who works with us, is taking care of those. If you did not sign up, please do so before you leave. And there's another sign-up sheet if you wish to make public comment. And if you would like to do so, and if you think you might, but you're not quite sure, go ahead and sign up, because once the applicant starts its presentation, then the sign-up sheet's going to be closed, and there won't be any other opportunity for you to sign up to make any comment tonight. However, if you, if you leave here and you want to make an additional comment and you want to send some information to us, we will be accepting written comments as well until the end of this week, until Friday at 5:00 PM. You can send those to us electronically at our web address. We, our website is charterschoolboard.mississippi.gov. You can send those comments to some of our websites. You can hand deliver them at our address at IHL out at 3825 Ruth Wood Road here in Jackson. Or you can just call me if you want to and share whatever comments you might have, and I'll make sure that they get into the record. Speaking of record, we have a co-reporter here with us tonight, Dawn Stuffelfilm. Dawn is taking down everything that everybody says. And so, for those of you who will be speaking, I ask that you speak slowly and clearly and state your name when you get up, so that Dawn can get all of the information as part of the public record. We are not legally required to have these public hearings, but we voluntarily decided to do it. We decided to do it because we think it's very important, and we value your input, and we thank each of you for being here tonight. Now, Catherine, can we take the sign-up sheet for anyone who wants, if you want to make public comment, if you want to share a comment tonight, and you haven't signed up to do so, and you want to? We're going to pass the sign-up sheet around one more time and let everybody do that. And I'll give you a minute or two if anybody's interested in doing that. And then, we'll turn things over to Mr. Robbie Gupta and his crew to make the presentation. But just give us a few minutes and see if anybody else wants to do that, and we'll go from there. I need some partial act, I guess, while we're considering whether to sign up or not. That might, that might run people off and stuff like that. If I could hear you. You're out of order. Okay. Anybody else who'll sign up to make any public comment? All right. If not, then what we will do is I will turn the program over to Mr. Gupta and the Republic Charter Schools personnel who are here. And you all introduce yourself, and you have the floor.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, everybody, for coming out today. My name is Robbie Gupta, and I was the founder of Nashville Prep, which is a charter school in Nashville, Tennessee, and now a co-founder and managing partner of a nonprofit organization called Public Charter Schools. And we are the applicant for Reimagine Prep, which is the school that we're here to talk about today. With me also is Christina McDonald, who is current Assistant Principal at Nashville Prep. Has worked in district public schools, private schools, and charter schools over the past decade, and is a tremendous asset to the Nashville community. So much so that the Nashville scene actually named her last year Nationality of the Year in recognition of how exceptional she was as a teacher. And she's going to have an opportunity in a second to talk about her academic program and the work that she's going to be doing here as well. We also have Kate Cooper, who's the current Director of Operations at Nashville Prep, who will be coming year-to-one regional operations for us, help us get school up to ground, set up a compliance structure and whatnot, if we are given the opportunity to operate here in Jackson. We also have members of our board of directors here. We have Angela Bass from Mississippi First over there with her hand raised, with her lovely daughter. We have Leigh Harper in the middle. We have Stuart Good over here. And I hope I didn't miss anybody else. We also have Bishop Ronnie Crewd and Leland Spie, who've been co-chairs of our advisory community since the beginning, and who really have been helping us navigate all the intricacies of getting support here on the ground. And we also have a ton of other supporters here in this room and around the city, and are sincerely grateful for how welcoming the Jackson community has been. This, the purposes of my opening remarks here are not to give a comprehensive overview of our school. We could not be able to do that in eight to 10 minutes. I just want to give you the thousand-foot details of our school, give you an opportunity to comment, but also I'm going to stay afterwards. I also have money cards. We're going to hand them out, and I want to sit down with anybody here afterwards, throughout the next few weeks and months, to have coffee and hear any questions or concerns that you have that might not be able to be best addressed in a 30-second, a minute comment or in a 10-minute presentation. So, a little bit about us. Public Schools was launched out of Nashville Prep and Liberty Collegiate, which are two charter schools in Tennessee that were founded in 2010. Both schools were chartered unanimously by the Metro Nashville Public Schools Board of Public Education to serve grades five to 12. And both schools have grown one grade level at a time. So, in 2011, we were grade five. In the following year, we were five and six. This year, we're grades five to seven. Next year, we'll be grades five to eight. And Nashville Prep, which is the school that I founded, was founded in partnership with the mayor's office in Nashville. The mayor looked at the quality of public schools in the city and wanted to encourage people to come to town to start new public schools that met the needs of communities that were particularly underserved. And so, when I partnered with the mayor's office, I looked to the neighborhoods that we felt needed much stronger public school options. And so, we immediately settled on North Nashville, which was a community that at the time was graduating less than 1% of students with college-ready ACTs. And for which the parents there were telling us that they just needed stronger options, they wanted higher expectations, they wanted stronger public schools. So, we set out to create a program that met their needs. Ms. McDonald in a second is going to talk about how we did that. But the biggest piece was the fact that we set really, really high goals for our students despite the fact that over 90% of them were students of color, despite the fact that over 80% of them were students on free reduced lunch. These are statistics that a lot of people would say would determine a certain destiny of their outcome that is not very strong. But what we said was that the students that were at Nashville Prep were going to exceed their results after two years of Williamson County, which was our opponent of Madison County. So, Williamson County is the highest performing county in the state of Tennessee. There was actually a study that came out last week that said that Williamson County might be the highest performing county public school system in the entire country. We said after two years, our students were going to exceed their results. And people used to laugh us out of words when we said this. They said, "Well, give you 100 years, you're not going to exceed Williamson County's results." That is the county that people moved out of the city of Nashville and the county of Davidson County to attend school. And amazingly, after two years, our students exceeded their results in three out of four subjects after two years. And that includes us backfilling seats of many students who left. So, a lot of students who weren't even with us for the full two years. Our fifth graders last year, in three out of four subjects, had the highest growth academically of all public schools period in the entire state of Tennessee. And our sixth graders, absolute scores, non-growth, were the highest performing open role in public school in all four subjects, and even exceeded our most competitive academic magnet school in science. This is despite the fact that the students were coming from neighborhoods that people were starting to give up on and were producing some results that no parent wanted to send their kids to. So, they did it because we believed in them, and also because we listened to their needs and crafted a program that met the needs of a lot of parents that were on the ground. So, I'm going to pass it off to Ms. McDonald, who's going to talk a little bit about what we heard and what we designed. And then, we'll pass it over to Ms. Cooper to talk about facilities and some of the technical details before opening up for comments.
First of all, thank you so much for having us here today. I'm really excited about getting to share our mission and our vision with you. As Robbie mentioned, we are very proud of the model that we've had at Nashville Prep and at Liberty, and very excited about bringing those best practices here to Jackson. We've heard from a lot of parents in Nashville and down here in Mississippi that parents are concerned about the education their scholars getting, if they're behind, do they know what's going on in their school? And so, we have taken measures to make sure that we inform parents about what is going on in the classroom. So, every single day, this fellow will bring home a prep report that says their grades and their merits and merits, and gives you an idea of their behavior in class, which parents have been extremely grateful for. Another thing that we have done is we've found that scholars are generally coming in about two grades below on average. And so, we have an extended school day. Scholars go to school from 7:30 until 5:00. And with that additional time, scholars can have two hours of math each day, three blocks of literacy. It gives us the chance to have something that we call Book Club, where scholars get to be in small groups with a teacher and just foster the love of reading without any standards or skills, and just fall in love with a book in a small group, which we're really proud of. We're also able to have one hour of focus or tutoring for every scholar. We're data-driven school, so teachers in the moment take the data and can find a way to reteach that standard for scholars, so that no scholar is left behind or falls behind on that standard. Another thing that we heard from parents was safety. At Nashville Prep, we have a code of conduct, which we will be bringing to Reimagine Prep. Scholars are trapped on their merits and demerits, and we send that home to their parents in the prep report every single day. Another thing we heard from teachers was their concern in their place and their ability to achieve high standards and their ability to grow in the school. And while we do think that the amount of time we've had in this school is important, we also think that the student growth and your professional development is important, and we've created a master teacher track that teachers can apply for. I am extremely proud of the model that we have and the things that we've been able to accomplish at Nashville Prep, one of which being the character development that we have. We've seen huge gains in this character development, but I can tell you, we have a long way to go, and I'm extremely excited about adding even more character development to the school, hopefully that we can start here in Jackson. Paul Tough did a study on the top 24 characteristics that people have who succeed in life. We picked the eight, and we call them our core eight. And we have advisory in school where scholars are in gender-based small groups, and we talk about what's going on in their neighborhood, what's going on in school, what's going on with their academics. And we give them a safe place to talk about these core values and how they can grow and struggle in these. We also have our merit-to-merit system. So, if you take the core value like self-control, what's really exciting is by the end of the year, a parent can say, "This is how much my scholar has grown based on merits and demerits," and a core value like self-control. Another area that we're really excited about is coding and computer use, and I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Lee.
So, one of the things that we found was that our students were doing really well on the traditional academic subjects. I talked a little bit about the data before. But when we were looking ahead to the future, we started to realize that a lot of them, especially those of you who have kids, realize that we're all becoming more and more dependent on these devices in our pockets and these computers that we have at home. The people who create the software and the tools that we use on these computers are the people who are creating the future. And those people are creating the future regardless of what income level they came from or what neighborhood they came from. So, it really is, as Bill Iam says, if you ever watch those Code.org videos, it really is the next superpower, the ability to code a computer and create these tools. And so, we, as a school, actually formed a group with the national tech community, the best coders, computer scientists in the city, including Vanderbilt University, the National Entrepreneur Center, and people who work at companies like Mozilla, and started to create a curriculum that would teach our students to code computers in middle school. And that is a curriculum that we're piloting in Nashville this coming August in all three of our schools, and a curriculum that would be built into Reimagine Prep as well, so that all students who graduate to eighth grade can code computers as well. And that is something that is not asked of us on the state test. It's not something that's part of Common Core. It's something that we just believe is really important for kids in society today, and something that's really powerful for kids, especially going into poverty, who want to go from the bottom to the top in their lifetime, and really provide for their families, and participate and create the world of future. We also have innovations around what we call areas of passion. So, as a school, we realize that we're taking students from many different backgrounds, and students wear uniforms, they use collective language, we have shared values, as Ms. McDonald talked about. But as they get to the upper middle school level, and especially as we start to study some high performing high schools, students just want to be individuals. And so, one of the biggest areas of innovation that we have right now, that we do not have figured out, but we're really excited to keep tackling within the next few years, is how do we take a program that does really, really well for all kids in the same way, getting them all to up to speed on the same set of skills, start to differentiate so that students get an academic personality and participate in the different enrichments that they're passionate about. And so, that's something that we're really excited to work on, especially as we come here to Jackson. With that, I'm going to end over to Ms. Cooper.
Awesome. Like Robbie said, my name is Kate Cooper. I have been in charge of regional operations in Jackson. So, I know a lot of folks are probably wondering where our school is going to be. Right now, our most promising facility option is Bishop Crewd's facility in South Jackson on Weely Road. And we have identified this facility for a couple reasons. First of all, it is a close proximity to the neighborhood we plan to serve predominantly. What we've heard in Nashville from a lot of our parents is that location matters. Parents want the school to be accessible to their neighborhood, and thus, we want to locate ourselves in South Jackson. Second of all, the facility will be able to accommodate our school to full growth. So, we'll be able to have fifth through eighth grade on the same campus, along with ample space for outdoor activities, for extracurriculars, et cetera. In the event that this arrangement falls through, we do have some backup options, but right now, that's our most promising facility. As part of our application process, we also developed a 10-year budget and cash flow. And as a typical startup, we actually won't have any public funding until next August when we open. Therefore, we are dependent on some philanthropic support in our startup year. As our school grows to full scale, five through eight, we actually become sustainable on public funding. But until then, we will be dependent on some philanthropic support. We're really fortunate of the partners we've found in the Jackson community to give us the funding we need in our early years. And the beauty about our schools in Nashville is we actually spend less per pupil than a traditional district school. We're also really passionate about the huge dollars that make it to the classroom and make it to students rather than being spent on overhead. We're also able to pay our teachers in Nashville on average about 15% more than the traditional district teacher earns. We are really passionate about rewarding teachers for excellence, and so, we want to make sure we're compensating folks accordingly.
Thank you. And so, just to reiterate that, you know, I know we're not here to talk about all charters, but one thing that we hear in community forums often is that charters, and particularly our model, is people think it's only possible because we spend more money. And so, this is publicly available data. Our schools spent, the district in Nashville spent about $11,600 per student last year, and we spent $10,400 and change. And that is not taking into account that we also don't receive capital expenditures for the facilities. So, we're really at a disadvantage, and despite that, we're getting dollars to the classroom and finding a way to pay our teachers more. And we do that because of some innovations in the model itself and because of real dedication to put as many resources in front of kids as possible. The last piece I'll add, and then we'll open it up for public comment, is that the biggest part of why we're here in Jackson, and we look at a lot of places to go, is because of the community itself. And I would say that if it wasn't for Bishop Crewd and a lot of the supporters here on the ground telling us that they wanted different models for public education, we would not be here. And I know I've got some of our friends from Midtown Partners here as well. There are others that we're going to be working with over the next few years. And I say this because our posture here in the community, our, everything that we do, all of our energy will be in having as many conversations as possible with as many people who are concerned about their options and about how we live in the community, because we're here to listen. And so, I've been coming here for a little bit, over a year now, I think. Eric, correct me if I'm wrong. And every time I come here, my goal is to be with as many people as possible, to hear what's going on, what we can do. And now, this summer, we're finally getting to the place where I think a lot of us wanted to be, which is now we have staff here full-time, living in Jackson, working in Jackson, committed to Jackson full-time, to help work with you to realize collective dreams. Our track record in Nashville in this respect is very strong. And so, in North Nashville, the largest institution in our neighborhood is Tennessee State University, the historically black university. We've had an incredibly strong partnership with them since the beginning, including co-locating our first school, Nashville Prep, there for the first two years. And now, our new school that opens up in August, the Nashville Academy of Computer Science, will be located in Tennessee State University as well. We're partners with many, many churches, neighborhood organizations, children's organizations, individuals, all to reach a collective goal to better the kids in our neighborhoods. And that is what we're aiming to do here. We want to do it step-by-step, conversation by conversation, brick by brick, block by block. And this is one small step in that direction as we hopefully get the privilege of opening Reimagine Prep in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Robbie. We appreciate that. Christina, Kate, thank you for that presentation and for that information. Let me just take this opportunity, I'll perhaps forward, to thank you as well for your professionalism and the approach you've taken in terms of your application and working towards the process with us. We appreciate the approach you've taken, and we appreciate your responsiveness, and we appreciate the effort that you've made and that you've put into this process. So, we thank you for that. And we thank you prospective board members who are here tonight. Some of us have sat on school boards before, so we can, we won't tell you what you're about to get into because you may want off. And, but at any rate, we appreciate your support and your interest in being here as well. Now, I'd love to pull up for public comment. We have several who have signed up. The first is Christina McDonald, but I think she's already had her charter. Exactly, as well as Kate Cooper. And so, we will move on to Leigh Harper. Ms. Harper, if you could come to the podium, please, and speak into the microphone. The ground rules for public comment will be that each person will be allowed up to five minutes to make comment. I will keep the time and let you know if you're getting there, but I'm not going to be too rough on that. But Ms. Harper, if you'll state your name, please, and for the record, and then feel free to share with us your comments.
Again, my name is Leigh Harper. I am a community member. I own a small business here in town. And I also want to thank the board for, you mentioned that you didn't have to have this public meeting, but I appreciate the fact that you did have the public meeting, because I think people need to hear. And we've tried our best to make available as much as we can in the community the information about the new public charter school. about the Republic Charter School. I have been asked and have agreed to serve on the Republic School Board. I have had some board experience. I served seven years on the Jackson Public School Board, served two years of that as president of that board, and so I am very familiar about being on the school board. One of the reasons that I come here and support this application is because, well, that very reason I did serve, because a lot of times on the Jackson Public School Board. There was a lot of challenges that I believe that the school had. There's good people at Jackson Public School, and I support the school system continually. And for that reason, I do support the public support of charter schools also. But I do know that we need to start a new conversation about how we are educating our young people. One of the words that I have been so pleased to hear is instead of calling the young people students, calling them scholars, they need to see themselves differently. They need to believe that they can also be educated. They need a system that's going to make sure that they do that. I'm hoping, and it's my desire, that as we do this, as we take on this challenge, that actually our traditional public school system, they learn some new tools on how to educate our children. And so I am absolutely in support of the school, and I will be as long as they're educating our children well. So thank you for the time, and I look forward to serving on it, and I do hope that they will be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harper. We do appreciate your public service and your role in the Jackson Public School Board. We appreciate the contribution you've made there, and thank you for sharing it with us. Ms. Erica Berry.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and start off by saying I'm here as Erica, now at the Charter Schools Association. I just want to clarify that, we haven't created like a fancy rubric to determine which schools we're supporting, so I'm just here as a Jacksonian.
Could you give us your board name?
Yes, thank you. I'm Erica Berry, and I'm going to be real quick, I just have five points I want to share. I'm going to share with you why I'm advocating for this school in Jackson. So first of all, we talked to a lot of parents in Jackson, and it saddened me a bit that their number one concern is safety. They don't talk about academics, they don't talk about college, they don't talk about future earnings for their kids, they talk about safety. And when I was looking through Republic Schools, or I'm sorry, Reimagined Prep's application, what stuck out to me was their section on culture and discipline. I think we need to get away from discipline in our schools as a term of like punishing kids. The way they develop it is it's a culture. I'll quote real quick. Their philosophy on discipline is simple, consistency, consistency, consistency. We believe that nothing undermines the efficacy of expectations like making exceptions. Too often, society lowers its expectations of our students. We do not. We make time to teach discipline and to address imperfections when we see them. Students come to understand that expectations are not personal but universal, and staff understands that our role is not to point out bad behavior but to teach good behavior. I got so excited when I read that, because that's what we need in Jackson, that's what we need for our kids. We need that mindset shift away from punishment to creating a really great culture that reinforces positive behavior for our kids. The second thing is that, you know, I am from Rankin County, and I grew up thinking that Jackson Public Schools were horrible, and that is egregious. Nobody should ever have that kind of attitude, but that's just the perception that's out there, and we need to change it. I do think that the school can have a shift in changing that. Namely, you know, I'm not saying that this school's going to start or change Jackson, but I think it can start a conversation, eventually a revolution, in that, you know, kids in Jackson, look, kids in Jackson can learn how to, and give them the right opportunities. And you'll see that with this school, and I hope that it'll give the school a chance to prove that, to prove that their kids are just as smart as kids in Rankin County, Cusco County, Williamson County, Massachusetts. Because they are just as smart, they just have to be given those opportunities. Also, this school, like I said, it's not going to, you know, like change the world, but I do think it can change the conversation for education in Mississippi. Look at whatever great job they've done in recruiting smart people, not just on their team, like Christina, Kate, and Robbie, but in the community, Bishop Crute, Leigh Harper. These folks, they're very smart and strategic about adopting partnerships with really smart people, and that's what we should be doing in education. You know, we wouldn't go to any media or doctor, we wouldn't go to any media or heart surgeon. We want the best for our kids, and we need to treat education like it is the wonderful profession that it is, and that's exactly what they do. And also, I've been able to witness how they approached the community with a lot of humility, and I think that that's going to set a really great standard for other schools if they are wanting to come to Jackson, other schools, I mean, other charter schools. Because it is going to be hard, you know, a lot of times in Mississippi, we don't like outsiders, but they've been able to do a really great job of saying, yes, we might live elsewhere, but we want to start a community in Jackson. We want to get to know you, we want to learn from you. And that's been very inspirational, and in their application, they're very honest about that, and that's what we need. So I'll stop there. I don't know if I, I think I just hit four points, but we're fine.
Still almost half a minute. Thank you, Erica, we appreciate those comments. Angela Bass.
Hi, my name is Angela Bass. I started by saying that I'm a Mississippi native, I've lived here for most of my life. I'm a member of the Greater Jackson Community, I'm a parent, you saw my daughter Megan Lewis in the back, and I've been working in education for over five years. I'm also a member of the Republic Charter Schools Board, and I am excited about the application that we have submitted. So I'll just take a few minutes to talk about one particular aspect of the application that I'm excited about. I'm excited about a lot of things that's in it, but what resonates most with me and the things that I'm most passionate about is the focus on teaching, because I was an educator. And so having been an educator, I know that one of the most important things in a school is developing teachers and the teacher actions that go on in the classroom. And so one of the best things schools can do to prepare for success is to prepare its teachers for success. So in the Reimagined Prep, in our application, there are many great things that focus on preparing teachers, and I'll just touch on a few of those. For example, there's 20 days of summer development, and this development is school-based, it's highly structured, there's objectives and goals, and just many great things about the professional development that teachers are going to have, and then it's ongoing. There's monthly time building, there's weekly time, there's even daily time building for teachers to master their crafts, and I think this is extremely important. Having been a teacher, I know that that would be extremely valuable, would have been valuable for me during my, you know, time teaching. And so this is a significant amount of time devoted to development, to meaningful development for teachers, and a very great opportunity. And Reimagined Prep is showing that it will invest in Mississippi teachers and in turn be an investment for our students and our community. And so that's one, that's just one of the reasons that I'm just so excited about, with some of the application and possibly have an opportunity to carry it out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bass, we appreciate that. Bishop Ronnie Crowe.
Say good evening to everybody else, good to be here. I am here to actually make my support even more for Reimagined Prep, and I'm doing that because I believe that I have children's ability to learn and be the very best that they can be. I'm a pastor, a behavioral resident church in South Jackson. I think most people know that I'm a strong advocate of all of Jackson, particularly South Jackson. And South Jackson has been known sometime in the city not as the best place to live. We think it's a pretty great place. And we're committed to the children, especially in that part of town, to those children who are homeless. And charter schools remain as not something that I am new to. I've been an advocate of charter schools for well over 10 years, because I believe that parents should have good alternatives if things are not working well, and they are having an alternative to turn to. And I was excited, first I've been advocating this, a state level internal policy for a while, but I was really excited once the state could let us get an opportunity to save this while passing this in the city. And so out of that, then I joined with many others who sought to see what we could do to run the best operator in the United States to Jackson, Mississippi, so that we could make sure that if we were going to do this here, that, you know, we wouldn't have anything that was mediocre, but we would have something that was top light, and we'd give our children absolutely what they deserve, which is the very best education that is possible. And so I am just very, very pleased and thrilled at Republic, and Robbie, and his group, and frankly, the expertise, the skill, the commitment, the passion that they bring, and that they're going to bring to our children here in Jackson, Mississippi. And my hope is that this school, though it's going to be small, you think of overall monitors for public schools and Jackson Public Schools in this town, I hope that it will settle, once and for all, any issues that anybody may have about our children's ability to be hiring and selling students, regardless of where they come from, and that it will be that great model that hopefully will encourage and maybe convict also, and push other public schools in this town to do a better job for our children. Finally, I want to say this, because I want to settle this issue. You know, I am a strong supporter of public schools. All of my children went to private and public schools, and they all went from Jackson Public Schools. I have eight grandchildren, and the ones that are in school, I'll go to a Jackson Public School. And we're very pleased with what we're getting so far in terms of that. And then our church, we were adopted for three public schools down in South Jackson. We're giving all the time to schools, and I've got a slew of teachers and principals and all kinds of who are part of our community. We are committed to public schools, and of course, a charter school is a public school, and we think it is a wonderful instrument for this community. And, you know, as somebody who understands also people who oppose these things and such as that, I think this is going to be one of these examples that frankly, I think various things are going to change people's minds, and folks are going to be excited, and we'll be happy. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop Crowe, we appreciate those comments. Carl Twiner.
Thank you very much, Carl Twiner. I'm a retired educator, 35 years, retired superintendent of schools, principal, curriculum director, now staff developer for several teacher effectiveness and staff developer for educators. And I'm sure you all know that name, because I was sitting here, I was invited actually by Angela Bass to attend. Needless that I know that, I don't know the name Reimagined Prep, but I do know the name Republic Schools. I served as a consultant for metro schools in Nashville, and worked with Dr. June Williams and Hunter Lay, so now you know the connection. So I'm really excited. Didn't really prepare to give a comment, but I do want to say, because of just listening in there, that I know what school we're dealing with, excellent, no question about that, and I think it would be obviously excellent for Jackson, because to be perfectly honest with you, we have to do something different. And as a principal, as a superintendent, at this day, up my hands, I was always handcuffed. Whenever I would have to step out and do something different for children, I remember doing a year-round program, designing a year-round program. I was an inner-city school principal in Jackson, 100% free lunch, made marketable gains in test scores, we did send children home, we designed a program for a year-round program, and at that time, the superintendent told me, don't have parents come, the answer is no. And so I lived that. In 2007, Forrest Dickman asked me to make a presentation to the legislature on support of charter schools, and at that time, I did not realize that our state department was not in favor of charter schools. The residuals to that were longstanding. So I wanted to say thank you for being here. Bishop Crute, I'm a Baptist preacher, and I was trying to see if he could hold to five minutes. Put a little pressure on me, but very befriended by him, and I'm absolutely supportive of the effort. If South Jackson is what we need to do, that area, that's a great starting point, and you can count on my support, and thank you so much. And I've got some students here, Monica, and so I've got a lot of public schools, and I'm a supporter of public schools as a bishop. I'm a supporter of good education. Start education, we expand and create learning laboratories for children every day, all day. So thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Twiner, you both did real well. Yeah, the pastors, you kept it well within the bounds, so we appreciate that. Mr. Mike Sayer? Pastor, so all right, Mr. Sayer. That's a record of what Mr. Sayer has refused tonight's public comment after signing in. That's kind of an inside joke here, Rob. Monica Cannon?
Hi, my name is Monica Cannon, and I'm decided here in Jackson, Mississippi, within the Midtown community. And I'm here today in support of that application for many reasons, but first I just want to share that I am a public school supporter, traditional public as well as charter public, contrary to public belief, and I do support both, because I know that our children are going to be involved. So I want to make sure that both of those environments are quality. Secondly, I did review the 288-page application. The one thing that I would change, if anything, would be the location from Jackson to Midtown. That's a joke with Bishop Crute, who also really wanted Nashville Prep to come to Midtown, and we were heavily recruiting them, but they hesitated, and that's okay, that's okay as long as they're keeping Jackson refined with that as well. But I wanted to talk to you not so much about the application, but about the experience that we had when we went to visit Nashville Prep. Midtown has been visiting charter schools across the southern region and a little bit beyond, went to New York last month to also visit a system there. So we've been to New York, we've been to Arkansas, we've been to New Orleans, we've been to Tennessee, and taken, not only did we go, Midtown Partners and some of the staff, but we took 20 parents and some educators from our community. So we were all looking and seeing the same thing around this conversation about changing the educational landscape in Midtown. And I can tell you that by far, Nashville Prep, and one other system in Tennessee, they were our top two choices. We were just blown away. We saw some great things in New Orleans that we liked. We saw some great things in New Orleans that we liked, but when we got there to Tennessee, it was hands down National Prep and Desault, I believe, were the top two and we were very, very impressed with both operations. So we didn't even know what to expect. We had been touring, we arrived there, got to the building, building looked pretty similar to some of the other ones that we, we were happy to see that was actually the school. You know, we went to retail shopping centers, they self-charter schools and all, you know, churches everywhere. So we were happy to see that it was a school, a traditional school building. We got there and immediately we were met by two professional, personal young men, two students. And they introduced themselves and told us that they would be our ambassadors and would be tourists to the school, through the school. So we went from immediately like, wow, this is different, you know? And so our first stop after they gave us the basic overview about the school and the community, our first stop was Mrs. McDonald's classroom. And oh my gosh, and I'm looking back at my friends that put me on this trip, we got in their classroom and we kind of stood in the background, we didn't know what to expect. But we were so pleased with the environment in the classroom. The students were, we saw self-efficacy occurring, we saw students learning, we saw them focused and engaged. We saw them say things like, "To expand on what my peers said." Okay, you know, that's good. We saw them just really engaging and sharing in a way that we hadn't seen in some of the other places and to be frankly honest, in some of the schools here, in some of the schools in our community. So we were very impressed, we were very impressed with her facilitation skills because she didn't teach them. She didn't stand over them just lecture, she facilitated and got it on and she got back and the students carried it. So we were really impressed. We, the students talked about, they needed to show a passion about, I've read my 400,000 word. And I was like, what? You know, and they talked about it, they were excited about reading and loved to read and wanted to share and show us all of their goals and what they had accomplished, we were just really pleased. But let me tell you, now I'm running short, we had a moment where we went into a class, a class with a seventh grade, with some seventh grade students. And so all Robbie did was say, hey guys, we got some people here from Mississippi visiting, they want to just come and learn about the wonderful things that you all are doing and just kind of have a conversation with you. And that's all he said. And one student said, you know, we just, we just finished reading Outliers, we just finished reading Outliers.
Good, I hate to interrupt you because I could listen to you explain them.
Okay.
But just, time's up and I could give you a more second.
Okay, but I just want to tell you, in heaven's out of the students, they shared with us, the one question that kept coming up from them is, they looked at the statistics in Mississippi, they know what our educational landscape looks like, and they kept asking us, if you all know better, why don't you all do it better? And they kept, and whatever we said was not, was not appropriate for them. They kept asking the questions, they went back to Google and they showed us the comparison of African-American males incarcerated in Mississippi compared to African-American males graduating, and then they asked us the question again. And they just talked about how in Outliers, success is made based on not only what's inside you, but what's around you. And they gave us, they could take home with us as far as a thinking point about what's around our children here and how do we change that so that we can change the education in Mississippi. And these were seventh graders, and we were floored. So I just want to share that with you, but we're so excited that you're here, we're a little sad that you're not in Midtown, that's okay, we'll work through that. But we're excited that they're here, they're quality people and we're just looking forward to partnering with them.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Cannon. Appreciate those comments. That concludes the list of those who will be making public comments tonight. Let me remind you that if you wish to make any further comments, you feel free to do so. By the way, written comment, charterschoolboard.ns.gov, you can send those comments to us that way and we'll be happy to receive those up until 5:00 p.m. at the end of this week on Friday. Again, let me reiterate our appreciation for your interest, your participation and your presence here tonight. We appreciate your commitment to this process and thank you for being here and we stand adjourned. Good night.